Just attach slowly. I'll call this meeting order. And starting off, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, which needs to end.
Can I get the YouTube going?
Well, I'm ready to go. Now we're late. All right, we're ready to go now. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Sandy Elswick, and then we'll go over the invitation by Alan Curry.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray together. Father God, we give thanks for this day, for the beauty of it. We are mindful of the power of the resurrection in this season of Easter that we've just celebrated. And may you inject all of us as citizens of Smith County with a renewed energy, Lord, to serve you, to glorify you in all that we do, that we might consider our neighbor before we consider ourselves, that we might put others before our own concerns, that we might have compassion, Lord, for those in need, that we might love our neighbor as you have loved us. Lord, we're thankful for these servant leaders that you've called to serve Smith County on this Board of Supervisors. May you bless them and their families. May you bless their sacrifice of time and thought and effort, Lord, and use them as your instruments of peace, instruments of prosperity for our county and its citizenry, Lord. Help us to generate good, healthy jobs, a good economy, that folks might be able to feed their families and have food security. Lord, we pray that you would bless our healers, our healthcare workers, our first responders as they care for the citizens of this county, Lord. And we pray against the coronavirus. Thankful, Lord, that you have helped us make strides in vaccinations and getting that distributed to the citizens of this county. Bless our Smith County Health Department and others who are working on that effort, Lord. And just be with this group tonight, Lord. May they make decisions that honor you and that, again, think of those less fortunate, those who need the greatest assistance in our community. Help us to care for those who are most vulnerable, Lord. And always think how you would have us to work on their behalf. So again, thank you, Lord, for those in this room. Thank you for all the staff who work in this building, day in and day out, the educators, those who are caring for those in this community. And may you bless their efforts and guide their decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is the amendments to the agenda and the adoption. Do we have any amendments? I'm not aware of any. All right, have a motion to adopt. Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise. You going to extend? And speaking is about the agenda, as we all notice, we don't have our attorney with us tonight. As you say, your prayer time tonight. Remember his family in prayer. I believe his father passed away.
Yes.
So remember Scott and his family in this town. We have some special recognition tonight. Do you want me to handle that or do you want to, Sean?
You're welcome to.
We have two new employees with the county. Well, it's been with, we got Dennis Greer hiding back there in the corner. Dennis is new to the county. And Paula Harvey. Paula's. And I'm sure she gets a lot of jokes about the rest of the story. But it's nice to have you both with us. We appreciate you. Minutes of previous meeting. Both meetings?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All right, unanimous. We don't have any public hearings scheduled for tonight. Ms. Richardson, I believe we're up to you with the financial report.
All right. We should have some reports there in front of you and here on the screen in a few minutes. We'll start with the revenue summary that reflects information from July 1 of 2020 to April 13 of 2021. It's broken down by fund as you all are aware. And if you flip over to the very last page, there's a total balance there on the bottom. The current amount for revenue is $6,379,577.93. There's a year-to-date amount of $72,848,232.13, leaving a balance for the fiscal year Along with that is the expenditure summary. Again, it's broken down by fund. And if you flip through those funds to the last page, page five, there is a current amount through 4/13 of $7,949,169.84. Bringing that year-to-date expenditure to $62,994,701. Leaving a remaining expenditure balance of $37,152,925. So between those two ports, you can see that the revenue collected is about $9,800,000 over expenses. So we're trending well on our revenue collections. The next report you have there is county expenses and appropriations through March 31st, 2021. About midway through the page there, this is from the Treasurers Office, they reflect a bank balance of $18,533,404.65. And when you subtract the $10,876,464.45 that's been appropriated and spent, it leaves a balance of $15,636,920.20. Another thing that's important to note here on this report is your Sheriff Radar Fund, which is down to $88,649. The next page shows the uncollected county taxes and the uncollected water sewers. The balance on March is for the water sewer is $2,439,685.42. And then the uncollected taxes, your 2009 is $3,158,682.36. The uncollected 2020 taxes are $1,423,28.10. So that's a balance of $4,581,710.46. According to the Treasurer, we are about a million two of head of where we were this time last year as far as our account balances. Along with that, you have the Treasurer's Accountability Report that you can review. And if you have any questions related to that, we'll certainly do our best to answer those. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, and forgive my ignorance, but what is the LSPPTRA? What does that acronym stand for? On the county, excuse me, county, county water sewer uncollected tax impact.
So in short terms, if you remember back to the late 90s, early 2000s, Governor Gilmore's no car tax days, that legislation was the public transportation recovery act. And basically, the state was refunding the local governments, what they were losing, by discounting the car tax. And we get a set amount every year, so that's what that is. So the problem is, and this is a, this is kind of a misnumber when you look and you think, you know, we, there's 15 million out there. That nine million and change, we've gotten it. We just have to show it as not received on our books for five years. At the end of the five years, it comes off our books, but it's money that's come from the state. Thank you, my former CFO. So it's, we have to show it on the books, but it's not really an uncollected in all reality.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I know that question comes up a lot, especially from citizens when they're not looking. If we could request the Treasurer to identify that on this report, I think it would keep a lot of questions from being asked, which would show the portion of it that has been collected from the state. Because looking at this report, it looks like it's just uncollected for just the general person looking at it, so.
I think you just, I think that's a good point. You know, he can just add a little blurb, LSPPTRA already collected from the state or already previously funded by the state or something like that, we can really add that, yeah. And I've been talking with him, trying to improve this report to make it better, more readable and for the layman, the common citizen, and we've gone through some reiteration. So hopefully it'll be, so we'll have an easier report to read. I understand.
All right, any other questions regarding the financials? Hearing none, I'll move on to the payment of invoices. I guess when we're not paying invoices, we just look at appropriations. So. How do you want me to do it? You want me to do the whole county at the whole one time or section? Read each line out?
I would just do the totals.
Okay, the total county appropriations of $2,275,000.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Social services, $445,000.
Move to approve.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? School funds, operating funds, $3,895,000.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise?
Upstate.
Okay. School debt and capital outlay, $56,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
One extension. EDA Fund Four, in case you want to see what that is on page six, very information, $985.
Move to approve.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sheriff Fund 748, now this is 748, not 744. 748 is $3,138.3.
What's the difference?
748, 744 is the Radar Fund. This is other special money that comes in.
That's correct. Thank you. Move to approve.
All righty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Unanimous. Recovery Court Fund 749, $926.19.
Move to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All righty. Citizens time. Did we have anybody sign up? By the way, I'm happy to see all these smiling masks in front of me here. We've been alone with just no bodies in the room. It's nice to see a few people.
I will, there's no one on here, but I will say, I received a phone call just before the meeting from Mr. Nathan Gary from Saltville EMS apologizing for not being able to attend. He has to work tonight, but he'll be at the next meeting.
All righty. Anyone present wanting to speak to the board? A chance to give us three minutes of your thoughts. Here's a round of close citizens time. Presentation, Utility Enterprise Fund Review. Mr. Coach from Davenport Company is here to talk to us, so I'll lend you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And does anyone have a copy? If not, I can give hard copies out of the books that I brought. Would be easier?
Yeah, they're printed.
It's a pleasure to be here in front of the board tonight and glad to be able to come and do this presentation. What you have in front of you, we've organized in two basic sections. You see, as it's organized via the cover pages within the document itself, we did a review, we did a review of both the general fund and utility enterprise fund. And what you'll find in here, I think, we've got some, you know, good thoughts and good review on the general fund side. We've got some considerations that, for the board's thoughts and as it thinks about long-term planning on the utility enterprise fund side. With respect to what you'll see in here, just a few of the things that we're going to go over is some key county financial ratios on the general fund side, some comparatives with respect to other localities, as well as the credit rating medians that we routinely review. And we'll go over an overview and just kind of a highlight of the county's current credit rating as well. So with that said, what I'd like to do is start off in Section 1, which is on page three of the general fund review and trend analysis. Just as a reminder, I think all of you know or may not know, but a reminder of your current credit rating, the county is rated by Moody's Investor Service. And the current time, the rating is an A2. And as you'll see by the category, the charts on this side, that is considered a strong credit rating from their perspective and their terms. There's categories below that, triple B, which is the lowest investment grade category. And then there's a couple of categories above that. We do see double A, a lot of localities moving up into the double A range. Triple A, just everybody knows, is the highest of the credit categories out there. That's usually reserved for some of the largest localities in the United States. It's not just a matter of financial wherewithal and physically managed sound budgets, but it's also size and order of magnitude. So we think that's kind of restricted there in terms of not being able to get into that category because of the size of the county. We see, you know, long-term, strong A into the double A range potentially as well. On page four, as we look at the general fund side, we always routinely look at the general fund revenue side and the trend analysis there. I think what we've seen, just a big picture perspective, general fund revenues over the past five years have averaged increased at about 3.2%. That's a combination of both local property tax revenues, which have gone up on average about a little over 1%, but you have other local tax revenues in addition to personal, to general property taxes, but local tax revenues that have escalated a little bit faster than that. So when you balance all the revenues together with intergovernmental, you get a general fund that has grown over time, about 3% per year. On page five, digging a little deeper into the general property tax trend analysis, we see that a couple of key points that we'd like to make here is while the real estate tax has stayed the same at about 74 cents per hundred since 2013, we can see that real property taxes have been about flat over the five-year timeframe. But as we look into and see some of the other categories, we see where that growth is coming from. Some elements of that have been due to public service corporation as well as personal property taxes. And you can see machinery and tools, while they fluctuated a little bit, they stayed relatively constant over that timeframe as well. On page six, just to give you an idea of your tax rate, 74 cents per hundred of assessed value, how does that stack up with your southwest Virginia peers? We like to benchmark that in terms of that context. And you can see that we're on the upper end of that scale, but when you look at the comparative statewide in terms of size of budget, size of population, you're right in the mix in terms of tax base and also tax rate with respect to the 74 cents per hundred. It's also important to note that when you look at county-wide averages throughout the entire Commonwealth, and this encompasses not only smaller localities, smaller counties, but also large, large counties, that average is about 80 cents. So we're not, we're not over that average by any means. On page seven, looking at the other side of the equation, general fund expenditure trend analysis, you can see while we did talk about the general fund revenues growing at about 3% per year, excluding education, the general governmental expenditures have grown at about 3% per year. So there's about, there's an equilibrium there with respect to those two. However, when you look at the education transfer, that education line item has grown on average about 12.9%. So if you look at that, that's a relatively faster clip, and we see that without new revenues, sustaining that kind of growth would be very difficult over the long term. On page eight, here's where we put it all together, putting the revenues together with the expenses and seeing, okay, where is the general fund results in terms of the year-end results as they've been audited over the past five years? One point we'd like to stress and take as a key takeaway there is that the recurring operations, that is, the general fund revenues versus expenditures have been managed very well, and that has allowed the county to generate positive results, which means additions to fund balance over time, reserves for the rainy day fund, as well as also invest in capital projects. So that's what we would routinely expect to see amongst A-rated credits and higher that is solid, structurally balanced, as well as conservatively managed, managed general fund revenues and expenditures. On page nine, where that also translates and shows up is when we look at unassigned fund balance over the past five years. You could see that from 2016 to 2020, the unassigned fund balance is what's considered that unrestricted or unassigned monies that are not dedicated to any one point, one particular project or one particular aspect of the county's operations. But it's actually what we call reserves that allow the county not only to cash flow, that is operate from month to month, because there's a difference between, routine difference between revenues coming in, that is tax collections that may come in at various points in time, but also expenditures, which are routinely regular on a monthly basis. That unassigned fund balance allows the county to be able to cash flow that without resorting to any sort of interim financing or short-term borrowings. And it also provides the ability to, for example, if there are unforeseen circumstances such as storms or natural disasters, to be able to respond quickly and be able to allocate funds to that, you know, to the extent you need to, then get reimbursed later at that point in time. But what we see here and one key takeaway is that the unassigned fund balance has grown from about $5.1 million in 2016 to upwards of about $10 million in 2020. I think the key thing here is when we talk about numbers, we also have to think about it, not only the total dollar value, but in context of the size of the budget. When we look at the county's policy, that policy is about 7.5% of the county's budget. But when we think about best practices under GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, National Association of Counties, even the credit rating agencies that provide your credit rating, when we think about best practices routinely, fund balances are benchmarked or a good threshold to think about as a starting point is two months' worth of operations. That translates into about 16% to 17%. But of course, that could be adjusted based on the size of locality and your particular needs, but generally thinking about that as a good threshold or benchmark is a good consideration to have. What we would see as financial advisory aspect here, potentially considering a strengthening of this fund balance and perhaps including an element of a budget stabilization fund concept in it, would be a good approach. That's currently what a lot of your peers are doing today and what the rating agencies are seeing local governments move to. On the next page, on page 10, what we also wanted to show here, again, is on the left-hand side of the page, the true dollar numbers as they stack up, and that's just graphically representing what you saw on the previous page, but also putting in context on the right-hand side of the page, and we've color-coded that to the previous page, of percentage of revenues, as well as general fund revenues only, but also a percentage of general fund and school revenues. We like to think about, as Davenport often with our clients, because Virginia and local governments are responsible not only for the local government side, but also contributing to the education side and actually funding a large part of the education budget, looking at unassigned fund balance in context of both general fund and schools. So when we say 16% to 17%, we look at the bottom graph and think of that in terms of context and reserve ratios. And you can see we're close to that, 16% to 17% in this range. On page 11, when we look at the numbers, again, with a peer comparison, and what we've done here is we've extracted data from Virginia budget, similar-sized budget peers as well as population peers, but also credit rating agency metrics as well. We've stacked the actual dollar numbers and averages on the left-hand side, and you can see at 10.1 million. It might appear we're on the lower end. We're right in with the budget peers, right in with that range, but when you look at the rating agency metrics, we're a little bit lower than that in terms of true dollars. But that also doesn't factor in the size of the budget. As when you look on the right-hand side of the page, when we factor in the size of the budget as a percentage of the budget, you can see that we're right in the mix. So that level is right there at 26.7%, a little bit lower, a little bit higher than some of the categories. But you can see when we look at the rating agency metrics as well, and considering the county's rating at A2, you can see that we're right in that 25.7% for Virginia A-rated local governments. And when you look at the national level, we're a little bit higher than that. So we're right in the mix of where we should be given our rating category. On page 12, looking at another aspect of the general fund's responsibilities, which is the existing tax-supported debt service. That is, when we say tax-supported, all debt service paid from the general fund. This is not paid from the utility fund, from user rates and charges, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But this is the debt service that really is encompassing all the county's investments to date. The biggest two have been the recent school project a few years ago, several years ago, and the courthouse, which was completed a few years ago as well. All of that debt service is incorporated into this, and you can see over time, it's relatively flat once we get into the next couple of years, by 2023. One point to note is that when we look at how much debt and principal amount is going to be repaid over the next 10 years and compare that with the total portfolio, it's important to note that the county is going to be repaying about 75% of its debt over the next 10 years. That is a very strong and rapid payout. That shows that the county is not, what I'll call, kicking the can or pushing debt to future generations unnecessarily. So that's a good aspect to consider here. Typically, if you were to think about a 30-year mortgage, if you were to buy a house in that range, in a 30-year mortgage, that payout is about 35% to 40%. So it's a big difference when you think about that. A couple of.
I'd just like to note, and I hope lots of people here who are just attending will maybe get a copy of this document and look over it because it's very important. But when we have debt, the original principal was over $37 million, and the interest we paid was over $14 million. So, you know, when we take on debt, there is a cost associated with it.
That's definitely a good, a good point. And I think it's a balance of, you know, using cash to pay as you go and then using debt to the extent you need to wisely in that respect. On the next page, a couple of ratios, again, when we look at debt in context of certain benchmarks, that is debt versus the taxable assessed valuation, that's a key credit metric and a measurement of how much debt could be too much or how much is prudent when you think about it. Smith County's debt to taxable assessed valuation is 1.8%. When we look at that, that's considered right in there with the credit. When we look at that, that's considered right in there with the credit rate, Virginia-rated metrics, when you look at the A-rated credits and the double A-rated credits. The reason why you might think we're higher than the national credits is that most, when you look at national credits nationwide, they're not responsible for school debt as well. Schools in a lot of other states, most of the states, have their own independent school districts that do their own debt. Here, we've got the school debt on our books. One takeaway from this page is that when we look at, if we're to look at evaluating the fund, the unassigned fund balance policy going forward and perhaps thinking about potential amendments to that, consider adopting a debt benchmark here, a debt ratio here, and we've suggested anywhere between three to three and a half percent, which is reasonable for A-rated credits and local governments in the Commonwealth of Virginia. That is just a guideline, a financial policy guideline, that gives future boards an aspect or a ratio of potentially what might be prudent to, to have outstanding and what might you be able to borrow, should you so decide to use debt in the future. On page fourteen, again, this is another key credit metric as well, that measures debt capacity. This is debt service versus expenditures. Again, this is the measurement of how much you pay in debt every year, how much of that debt service that we saw over time versus the budget. And when we look at that, the Smith County is about four point eight percent, and again, that's on the, the lower side when you look at these numbers here and these benchmarks. Generally, a conventional benchmark for a local government to implement is not to exceed anywhere between eight to ten percent. Once you get above that ten percent range, that's when you start to stress the local government's budget. And again, if we were to look at a policy in this perspective, adopting that eight to ten percent, again, is a high-end benchmark that's prudent with, with rated metrics and sound financial practices. Doesn't mean you need to borrow that, but it just, it sets sort of that, we'll call that recommended guideline that you shouldn't exceed. So on page fifteen and sixteen, a couple of key takeaways, I think we, we went through, I went through a lot of these as I spoke through the, the document here, but to recap, the county is currently rated an A-two, which is a, a rating that's considered strong, it's right in the middle of the A category range. The county has conservatively operated its, its finances over the past five years, which has allowed itself to not only invest in capital as, as pay-as-you-go basis, but also create a unassigned fund balance that's been growing over that timeframe. Part of this was due in result to a strategic effort to make that decision in two thousand seventeen, to do refinancing that allowed and helped accelerate that growth in the unassigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance today is considered what we think is, is relatively strong when you look at the Virginia A-rated and double A-rated medians. We think there's some room to potentially amend the unassigned fund balance policy to consider perhaps strengthening that. And when we look at debt service, when we think of the county's total debt service in terms of, versus the, the local government budget, the county's general fund budget, as well as the total debt versus assessed value outstanding, we think the ratios are relatively strong as well. It's, it, it gives us a sign that the county is not over-leveraging or using debt unwisely and has used debt judiciously in the past as it, as it needed to as well. So the next part of the presentation is the utility enterprise fund and the trend analysis there. What we did on this, and what I like to make sure everybody understands as well, is when we did this review, we also created a, a financial framework, a model. It's a model we'd gladly give to the county, it's something that helped us do this analysis, but also it's a tool that we think can be used from a planning perspective going forward as the county thinks about the enterprise fund budget and potential capital needs down the road. On page eighteen, to give a snapshot of, of what we did here, we looked at the actual results, really from seventeen through twenty and the budget for twenty-one. And when you look at that and when we looked at this over time, there has been, I think, some key points here. Generally, over the, this timeframe, it's been rather tight, the enterprise fund operations have been rather tight, but it has been generally self-supporting, creating just enough revenues to cover its expenses and debt service. We did note that over time, though, these past several years, that any extra cash in the fund has been transferred out or back to the general fund, part and part probably due to repayments back to prior loans, but what we think is a good practice going forward is to have reserves, not only in the general fund, but reserves in the utility fund. And what that does is that allows for, again, unforeseen circumstances, should there be a water main break or a pipe break, be it weather, be it age, there's ability to respond to that quickly. And when we think about cash in, in the utility enterprise fund, we often measure that against the size of the budget, and when we think about that as days' cash on hand, if the budget represents three hundred and sixty-five days of cash on hand, generally a rule of thumb for a starting point is about a hundred and eighty days, or about half a year's worth of, of cash on hand. That would be about six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in terms of reserves. That's, as I said, a starting point. We do, do know water mains costs, can cost quite a bit, you know, unforeseen circumstances can, can create a, a short-term emergency. Having cash on hand in the enterprise fund and kind of reserves there would eliminate the need for the general fund to kick in or in an emergency provide support to the utility enterprise fund. On page nineteen, a comparison of some more key observations here. We do know, and what we factored into our analysis, is utility plans and goals to generate enough funds to make about two hundred thousand a year in terms of capital improvements on a routine maintenance aspect. But also, one other observation is that the utility has not raised its water and sewer funds, or the county's not raised the water and sewer rates for those funds since two thousand sixteen. And when we showed based on a comparison of water and sewer rates down below, the county's monthly residential water bill is about fourth, fourth highest, it's not the highest, and the county's residential sewer bill is about sixth highest of, of this group. One, one point of note about water and sewer rates, generally a best practice of utilities, because we all know that we're creating a product, we're creating a service, and it costs money to create the water and sewer and, and provide that over time, generally a best practice that we see from utilities is at, at a minimum, a CPI index sort of inflationary growth rate in, in those water and sewer rates. That, what that does is that can eliminate or help mitigate those times where you actually have to raise rates, and you don't have to jump it up extremely high in one point in time. So that is something to think about, we're not asking for any decision on that, but it's something to think about as a, as a routine best practice. The next page, on page twenty, we see a utility enterprise fund debt profile. Again, you look at this, it goes out rather long, a lot of these are USDA loans, they go out upwards of thirty, thirty-five to forty years, but we're financing long-term, most of these hopefully finance long-term utility investments. So they do have usually longer-lived assets, longer-lived lives. When we look at the payout ratio here, again, we're at a sixty percent payout ratio. So again, that's still a pretty strong payout ratio for a utility enterprise. Generally, as utilities invest routinely over time, they use elements of cash and debt, but generally we see a utility payout ratio closer to a, more a thirty-year debt repayment, so more in the forty to forty-five percent payout ratio range. So this is a little fast for a utility enterprise fund. So alluded to the model that we built for this analysis and this review, and we did analyze three potential scenarios. One, scenario one was, we'll call this the no rate, no rate increase scenario. We did then put in a, a factor of two percent growth and wanted to see how much, what we're trying to test is how much investment we can make without raising rates. Then scenario two, again, this is the CPI, sort of two percent inflationary adjusted or indexed rate increase. Any sort of revenues in excess of expenditures stays in the utility to try to help build up fund balance and sort of address those capital needs on a pay-as-you-go basis. And then scenario three, we did, since, since there haven't been rate increases since two thousand sixteen, we did a couple of catch-up years, just a little bit above the two percent growth, so two years of five percent, five percent, five percent, and then go back to a inflationary indexed rate increase to keep up with costs. So we, again, had the same concept, try to keep the cash in the utility to build up the reserves, and also invest in the utility system to provide cash for that on a pay-as-you-go basis. What scenario three also allows for is a little bit of debt-finance capital, to the extent there's the, there's the need to, what I'll call accelerate or kind of invest on a quicker basis, that's incorporated in scenario three as well, on a limited, limited aspect. So when you turn to page twenty-two, the results that you can see here, when we look at scenario one, without rate increases, and if we have to deal with inflationary expenses over time, this is really a, a non-sustainable or an unsustainable approach. This means that essentially, we've got a couple of years we can go, barely scrape by, but we've got to do something by the time we get to year three in terms of covering expenses and being able to invest in the system. Scenario two, when we look at the inflationary increases, we can see that our debt service coverage stabilizes about one-ten, does go up to about one-twenty-four by two thousand twenty-seven, but it allows you to invest, albeit at a slower pace, but put money into the system on a routine basis. And then by the time we get to tw- to about seven or eight years out, when the debt drops off, we can invest more in the system at that point in time. If you look at scenario two, over this ten-year timeframe, this is about one point six million worth of investment that we can put in over ten years. Scenario three, this is sort of the, the modified scenario where we catch up on the rate increases a little bit for a couple of years. What this allows us to do is really provide for, not only provide for debt service coverage, but also increase our days' cash on hand and really invest almost a double of what we have in scenario two. So we can invest upwards of three point six million into areas of the utility system that need it, and then we've got the ability, if we, if, if the county needs to, invest even more on a faster basis, use a little bit of the debt upfront in the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four timeframe to really get to that six, three point six million of capital investment. On the next couple of pages, just a snapshot of what this means with respect to the water and sewer bills. You can see that, again, in scenario one, there's really no adjustment there over that five-year timeframe. We've shown an average monthly bill assuming three thousand gallons a month, both water, water and sewer on a combined basis. And then if you look at scenario two, we've shown what happens to that charge over year over year. And if we look at a two percent adjustment, say going from the current bill to the next year, that really translates to about a dollar sixty for the average residential user on a monthly basis. And over time, if we just have those two percent adjustments, it's really a dollar sixty, when you think about it, per year on average for that level of use of water and sewer, three thousand gallons for a typical residential bill. When we look at the scenario three, when we have the five percent adjustments, we can see that the monthly bill impact in the first couple of years is about a four-dollar impact, and then it goes down to about a buck seventy, buck seventy-five in that range on a monthly So on the last couple of pages, some key takeaways for the, for the, the utility enterprise fund system. Again, the, when we looked at the review over the past few years, that has been really a well-managed or soundly managed utility enterprise fund system, albeit a very tight revenue expense enterprise fund. What the county's been doing is it's been absorbing or transferring some of the excess cash back, which leaves it, the enterprise fund system with really minimal reserves to deal with emergencies. If, if there were an adverse impact to the system, the general fund would have to then kick it in if there, there was an emergency. Again, when we looked at water and sewer rates, the rates have not been raised since two thousand sixteen, so there has been, we know escalation in costs since that time, but when we think about what could be a prudent practice going forward is the consideration of an indexed or inflation-indexed rate adjustment year-over-year that would allow you to catch up and also keep up with your investments in the system. And based on the scenarios that we've run, we do know that without adjusting rates, prudent investment within the next couple of years, some rate adjustment is going to have to be necessary to keep, keep the system in good operating order. And really, relatively small catch-up rates that we've shown in scenario three would allow the, essentially doubling of investment over a ten-year timeframe. So with that, I know it's a lot of information to absorb, I think there's some good, deep further details back in the back, but I'd be glad to take any questions and...
Chairman, I have a question of clarification. Back over on page, I'm sorry, it's not clear on this copy. Water and sewer fund, I think it, eighteen, fifteen. Yeah, back to page nineteen, where you highlight the Smith County reference of water bill and sewer bill compared back to three thousand gallons. Am I correct in assuming that that is an, an addition to those two numbers off of page nineteen? Lands over on page twenty-three, so we can see a, a true comparison of the proposed changes relative to a three thousand gallon monthly bill, because it...
Correct. That, that is the sum of both, because your water and sewer rates are identical, the users who pay both water and sewer, that would be the impact on the, as a whole there.
Okay, all right. And follow-up? Still good, okay. Historically, do you have any data referencing the other counties? Do they kind of mirror this adjustment annually or...
I, I can tell you, I can tell you, it's usually, I think, within this group, rate increases, and I'd have to go back and research, but I'm, I'm just thinking from memory, we've seen from time to time, rates have been adjusted, maybe not every year, but every couple of years at a, at a bare minimum to try to keep up with that. I couldn't, I couldn't tell you exactly who's doing what without looking back at their data and all that.
So you would be comfortable in assuming that if we were to adopt one of these potential rate changes, that we would kind of mirror the movements of the other counties?
I think you would. I mean, Wise County PSA, I can tell you, we've done a similar study for them, they're looking at rate increases, and in fact, that's one I come back to because we actually did the same thing. They have been raising rates every year, so they're, they have some significant needs. We're talking identified upwards of eight, seven to eight in the next five years, but they've got a sixteen million dollar need that's in years six through ten. So they've been raising rates to try to make sure they can hopefully accommodate that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That answers my question. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Producer, you have a...
Yeah, I just throw out on this page, just to let you know, out of all of our customers, the majority are water-only and not water and sewer, so a lot of our customers will see half of this increase rather than the, the full dollar sixty or, or four dollars. I would say probably thirty-five, forty percent would be have water and sewer, and the rest are water-only type customers.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
So you're suggesting this on land, or what are you suggesting over three thousand gallons when it comes to over a thousand gallons? The rate?
Oh, the rate. We're, we're suggesting the rate structure be raised in that percentage. We just put this comparison in for a three thousand gallon use in terms of residential exit.
You're topping two percent on top of, of a thousand gallons after that.
Right, the whole, the whole rate structure would go up to...
Which would challenge your, must use your dollar sixty-four for a figure. If you use six thousand gallons, then you, your dollar sixty-four is a whole lot bigger increase.
Right. It's a function of how much you use, but you're all going to get that same percentage increase based on what you use. What we've done here is equated to the average residential user, because that's typically, when we think about the impact on the residents... when we think about the impact on the residences, there's a lot more residences and a lot lower, what I'll call, even though it's a lower use, it's a budgetary impact to the resident.
So what you're telling me now in layman's terms is the utility is sustaining itself, but we don't have anything for down the road for repair?
Right.
That's what you're telling me?
Correct, yes.
If we have a big, uh-oh, we can't afford to fix it.
I'm sorry?
If we have a big issue, a big repair need in the future, we can't afford to fix it at this point.
I get that, but I just, you know, if I'm going to vote for something, I want an increase, then I want to know everything. We already, we're up to the top, we're fourth in water rates. We've all, I'd have to go back and look at that, but we're, there's a lot of people down below us that have a harder time serving more remote areas than we do, Wise County being one of them. It's the more remote, the more rougher the terrain, then harder it is to provide, keep up repairs and stuff.
Any other questions, Roland? Any other comments? Roland, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you to the board.
We're getting ready to go into the draft budget presentation. It's 10 to 6 right now, we take about a five-minute break, be back here, we're going to start up at 5 to 6.
Okay.